Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I call the regular meeting of the Menifee City Council to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Denver.
Here.
Councilmember Lees Meyer.
Here.
Councilmember Sobek.
Here.
Mayor Protam August.
And Mayor Mann.
Here.
Five present, Your Honor.
Thank you. We have words of inspiration tonight from Pastor Jeremy Ford of U-Turn for Christ Church. Pastor Ford.
Let's pray. Lord, we just thank you, Father, that for these men, these women, that came to serve, Lord, came to serve their city. And Father, I ask that you would just bless these men and these women with wisdom tonight. Lord, that you would just bless the city of Menifee, Lord. It's just an inspiration to walk in and see "In God We Trust" on the wall. And Father, I pray that you would just pour your Spirit and your wisdom into each of these men, everyone here in the room tonight. And Lord, most of all, Lord, we just want to thank you, Lord, that we can actually be in a country where we still can stand and say thank you. So we ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Sobek, would you please lead us in the flag salute?
Will you please join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have a very special presentation tonight. If we would all gather up front. We have the privilege tonight of honoring a very special leader in the city of Menifee who's been with us for many years. He's actually been one of the, what I would call, a timber of leadership in the city since 2009. Please welcome up Battalion Chief George Rodriguez. So as usual, we like to, come on up here, right in the middle, between Mayor Protam and Ms. Sobek, if you would. Yeah. So, we like to do things differently and in a special way. And, you know, this is a, this is not a retirement ceremony. Oh, it's a promotion ceremony. We have the high honor and privilege to recognize Battalion Chief George Rodriguez on his promotion to Assistant Chief. Which is really an amazing and awesome thing when you consider that he's going from Battalion Chief to Assistant Chief, skipping the Deputy Chief rank, and he's going to be posted out in the east, in the eastern Coachella Valley and be responsible for, I think, three or four cities and many men and women, which seems to be the hallmark of his career, which started in 1985. As a seasonal firefighter, Battalion Chief Rodriguez progressed through the ranks in Cal Fire, served in many leadership roles, many stations, even served as a fire marshal. But one of the most significant things is, I mentioned earlier, that he's been a timber of leadership in this city. And when I think about those who have been here the longest, you know, we certainly have Kathy Bennett, who's in the audience tonight. She retired. But we also have Julie Woodruff, Wendy Welch, Rob Johnson. But Battalion Chief Rodriguez came to us in 2009, and he's been with us until this year, this coming June. He's an amazing leader. He's a leader of men and women in stressful situations and several situations in the city of Menifee. And we're very honored to recognize you tonight for your promotion. And I want to share with you that Councilmember Lees Meyer and I, as one of your last official acts, we are going to pull off of consent this evening, the fire contract, and we're going to, we would like you to go over Appendix A with us, line by line, this evening. Would that be okay? All right. Very good.
I wrote them.
Yeah. I love, so, just a couple of other notes. I like to do this from time to time. So, 1985 was a very long time ago. So what happened in 1985? The Kansas City Royals were the World Series champ. The San Francisco 49ers were the Super Bowl champs. Los Angeles Lakers won another NBA championship. The Edmonton Oilers won the Stanley Cup. Yvonne Lindell won the tennis championship that year. And a couple of great movies that came out, well, great if you like them, or if you were born back then. Back to the Future, Rambo First Blood Part II, Rocky, which Rocky IV and Rambo First Blood Part II kind of reminds me of Battalion Chief Rodriguez and his demeanor. The Color Purple, Out of Africa, Cocoon, and the list goes on and on. But we want to honor and recognize your leadership. I know that a lot of times, city councils don't get the opportunity to do this, and you've been a low-key humble guy since the whole time that you've been here. And I know you don't like to have these types of presentos. It's not your way. But you know what? When you've been part of the leadership team in a city for seven years, we can't let you go without properly recognizing you. So, on behalf of the entire city council, congratulations on your, look, retirement has been scratched out. And promotion, city of Menifee, retired Battalion Chief, that's not true either, George Rodriguez, 2009 to 2016, with great honor and recognition for your commendable dedication and service to the city of Menifee. May your next adventure be long and fulfilling, May 18th, 2016. And your promotion is effective June 1st, correct? Well, let me be the first, or one of the first, to say congratulations, Assistant Chief Rodriguez. Excellent. And I know you're a man of many words, but you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been my privilege to serve as the Fire Chief of the city of Menifee for the last seven years. My wife and I have lived here for almost 30 years, so I've seen this community move along and change in many different ways. I remember the Newport Bridge being two-lane, for one, and Newport ending at Lindenberger. It's been an honor, again, to work with the council, appreciating always the support that was given to us in the fire service, or in the fire department, Rob Johnson, all this stuff here at City Hall, and the citizens of Menifee. We've always been supported by, in every event that we've had. Keep the baked goods coming. We always appreciate those, the cards. Again, it's been my honor, and I'm still around in the city, so my phone number hasn't changed. If you ever need anything, phone call away. Thank you very much.
Mr. Johnson, would you like to say a couple words tonight?
Thank you. George, you're going to be missed at all of our management staff meetings, all of our after-hours get-togethers. We appreciate your humor, your leadership, and your friendship. Congratulations, we're really going to miss you.
As we say in the Navy, fair winds and following seas. Congratulations, Assistant Chief Rodriguez. That was an honor for us to do that, for such a longstanding public servant and a great leader. We're grateful. Onto our agenda approval and modifications. Do we have any modifications to the agenda tonight?
Yes, there is one modification, Your Honor. Item number 10.9, Letter of Resolution of Support to Santa Ana Regional Water Quality Control Board, will be moved to June 1st.
Are there any other changes?
That is all.
Hearing none, the agenda is approved for tonight. Onto public comments. Please call the first public commenter.
Thelma Thompson, followed by Katie Manier.
My name's Thelma Thompson. We moved to Menifee from Paris six years ago, and I was proud to say I lived in Menifee. As when we lived in Paris, it got so run down that I was quite ashamed to tell where I lived. Now I'm seeing the same thing happening in Rustler's Ranch, which happens to be right down here, subdivision, which is where our home is now. Our street, streets have potholes big enough to ruin your tires. Cars are being parked on lawns. So many cars parked on the streets that it's hard to back out of our driveway, as you can't see around them due to a curve right at Park and Avenida de Fiesta. No one parks their cars in their garage. They just use them to store their stuff. We have old, ugly motorhomes with weeds growing under them and spider webs hanging off of them, parked on the side yards, which I'm assuming is permissible, but it sure does make the neighborhood look bad. It seems as if the city has forgotten that we are a part of Menifee. When Quail Valley got their streets redone, I asked Rob Johnson when ours would be done. He indicated ours would be done soon. Now, I'm not sure how long ago that was, but in my terminology, it has not been soon. I noticed the work going on down on the median of Sun City Boulevard, and that must be a costly improvement. And I was told the last time I wrote the city about getting our streets resurfaced, that there was no funds for that. When I wrote that letter, it was just after I had read on the city site about a large increase in tax dollars coming to the city. So I thought that might be a good time to remind them that we're still waiting. Many of the surrounding cities are knee-deep in corruption. Maybe we should start looking a little closer at our city government. Please don't let the developers ruin our city, as I believe there are some of you on the council that are beholden to them, and I know you know who you are.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, could we take a look at Rustler's Ranch and see where it is at in the pavement management plan? Because I know it is part of the pavement management plan, and maybe give her some feedback.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Katie Manier.
Have any of you heard of Porter Ranch? It's been in the news a lot lately. Toxic chemicals were spewed over hundreds of homes, if not thousands. People being moved to temporary housing. Now they say it is safe to go back. But EPA came and did testing inside the homes. What did they find but heavy metals? The levels are so high, it could cause permanent damage to people living there. Do you know the symptoms these people complained of? I'm sure you don't. I'll tell you. They suffered skin rashes, bloody noses, burning lungs, among many other things. You all have sat up there acting like God, saying it is safe, yet you have not monitored anything, and you've heard mothers up here complaining about their children and the illnesses. One lady had reports from the doctor regarding the high level of chemicals found in her three daughters. She up and moved, as this all fell on deaf ears. Was she bought off? That's a good question, maybe. Susan Rude stood up here while she was going through chemo and begged, begged this council to do the proper testing, and yet is still not being done today. Her husband had Q fever while she was fighting cancer. Do any of you know what Q fever is caused by? I think not. Maybe you should research that and see. The few things that are tested for are so insignificant that you might as well save the money and not do any testing. I brought along three handouts that you all need to read. One tells the symptoms felt from being exposed to biosolids. One other tells of a conversation between Bill Rawlings and Rob Johnson from way back. Of course, I'm sure Rob has selective memory, so I printed it to refresh his memory. With such a weak memory, I worry he can perform the job that he's paid so highly to do. The third article I printed tells the risk of illnesses increasing with the use of sewage sludge as fertilizer that was used in this valley for years by the farmers. Take a look at the history of the farmers and their families. Look and see how young some of them were when they died from cancer. Is there a correlation? Malibu High is another story of contaminants being used. Now they are being sued. People have pulled kids from the school, and three teachers, within a very short span of time, all have developed thyroid cancer. A coincidence? I think not. There are two other teachers that have that as well, but were diagnosed earlier. Still, it all ties in, and I will hand these printouts to the deputy, and there's one for each of you in hopes that you will read them. And if anybody has any questions, they can contact me or email me, and I can send them a ton of information.
Thank you, Ms. Manier. Next speaker, please.
There are no more speakers.
Very well. Onto councilmember updates and comments. Colleagues. Mayor Protam August.
A couple of updates to the council. Today, Councilwoman Sobek and myself attended a T-N-A-L transportation event over at the college. It was writer appreciation day, so the city hosted the event for RTA. We took some sandwiches over, and we talked to students getting on and off the bus. RTA took surveys, a writer appreciation for students in terms of RTA, the numbers are down about 20 percent for them, so they wanted to come over and interview some of the students. So I thought it was a good event, Councilwoman Sobek. We provided sandwiches and cookies to the students, and so it was a good opportunity for us at the city. Also, I wanted to take the time to remind everyone in the audience about the city's Memorial Day of Remembrance. I think that's scheduled for the 30th of this month. That'll be at Wheatfield Park at 10:00 a.m., and we hope all you people that are not off on your picnics and your baseball games and things like that can come down and join us at the city at 10:00 a.m. on the 30th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Denver.
Last week, I was honored to have three fam, or two families, four people from India come over, and they slept at our house for three nights. The Rotary Clubs brought them out, and they were here for three weeks, going to different towns. I got to bring them here to the city hall and show them around to Menifee and all the things that were going on. Sitting and talking to them in the evening, when you talk about the differences in our cultures, is really amazing. We got talking about where he at, the gentleman, my friend now, asked me, well, where did I meet my wife? And I told him, you know, where he met his wife? His dad and the wife's dad got together and worked it all out, and he met them after they decided, after the parents decided, that they were going to marry. And it goes on and on like that. Amazing stories. Saying we had a good time, and they really enjoyed being in Menifee.
Thank you, Mr. Denver. Anyone with updates?
Just a quick reminder that this Saturday at the Pluma Valley High School is the Relay for Life, and anybody who wants to attend, you can get out there about 9:00 o'clock in the morning. So it's a great cause and a great event. Just a reminder.
Councilwoman Sobek.
On that, sorry, on that, we have a health and wellness fair at the Case and Esereau Senior Center coming up next Monday, May 23rd. And later on in the agenda, I was gonna maybe see if we could do a proclamation for its older senior, its older, its recognition of older seniors month, or something like that. I have it written down. But anyway, it's open to everybody. It's from 10:00 to 2:00, and they're going to do all kinds of screenings, health screenings. There's going to be door prizes. It's just open to everyone in the community. So come out.
Case and Esereau's at what time?
From 10:00 to 2:00.
Thank you very kindly. Mayor Protam mentioned about Memorial Day, just to, this Memorial Day is a little bit special than most in terms of it being the 150th anniversary of Memorial Day, celebrating those fallen soldiers and airmen and sailors throughout our history. And last Friday, Councilmember Lees Meyer and I and the Chamber of Commerce hosted the fourth installment of our mayor's business roundtable, and we had the healthcare industry in here. We had all the hospitals from the valley here, hospice of the valleys, some in-home care providers, the CEO and Board of Director of the Southwest Healthcare System, and it was probably one of our most, it was one of our most productive meetings in terms of putting together some ideas and getting the word out to programs that people just aren't aware of. And so the city manager is going to explore with staff, dedicating a future addition of the Menifee Matters Magazine specifically to those types of topics. Healthcare, what's available, VA, in-home care, those types of things, and contacts that we can put out to all of you and our citizens. Also, on the same day, I had the pleasure of attending South Shore Elementary School. I was invited by Ms. Ashley Davis, the, one of the third-grade teachers at South Shore, and I got to talk to all six classes of the third grade, and oh, man, they were just like a sponge. They wanted to know everything, from have I met the president, to how did the council get elected, what made you run for office, to how long you, how many years you've been married? How did you meet your wife? Do you have pets? How many kids do you have? And it was just, including, what color, what's your favorite color of tie? It's pretty amazing, these young kids, and I think Ms. Sobek was going to join us that day, but I think she's going to do another venue and another class and another grade to do the same type of thing, and I would recommend that each one of you do it. It was very uplifting. It was amazing stuff. Those little third graders were absolutely just like sponges. That concludes my report. Mr. Lees Meyer?
Yeah, I just want to piggyback on what you said there. You said third grade, and I've got a third grader. And she came home one day, a couple of weeks ago, and said, yeah, so we're learning about the city council, and we talked about you. It was, it was pretty funny.
What kind of grade did she give you?
Well, I don't think they gave grades, but it was, it was pretty funny to hear that. She got embarrassed, and everybody looked at her like she was super important. It was, it was pretty funny. But yeah, you're right, those kids are sponges.
That's neat. Great age. Hearing no other further updates or comments, we're on to approval of the minutes from the May 4th meeting. Are there any modifications, changes, or corrections? Hearing none, those minutes are approved. Onto the consent calendar. The city clerk polled, not polled, moved Agenda Item 10.9 to the June 1st meeting. I'll entertain a motion for the balance of the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Roll call, vote, please.
Mayor Protam August.
Aye.
Councilmember Lees Meyer.
Aye.
Councilmember Sobek.
Aye.
Councilmember Denver.
Aye.
And Mayor Mann.
We decided not to have the Assistant Chief Rodriguez go through Appendix A of the contract with us, so we'll save him from that. So aye.
All right. That passes unanimously.
We have no public hearing items tonight. We have a discussion item tonight, Agenda Item 12.1, participation in the federal MAP-21 Surface Transportation Program, also known as STIP, for the resurfacing of Newport Road from Bradley to Marietta Road. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Very, very exciting night tonight for us. Another opportunity to make some major improvements to our major corridor. I'm going to turn it over to Jonathan Smith, Public Works Director, your city engineer, for the balance of the item.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Carlos Geronimo, the Senior Engineering Capital Improvement Division of the Engineering Department, project manager for the project, will provide a brief update for you, and at the end, we can answer any questions that you have, including what MAP stands for.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. It's a pleasure to be standing here in front of you and talk about this project for the city. Before we get to the project, I'd like to talk to you a little bit about the Newport Road corridor and a little background. So on the east side of Newport, we have completed our project in 2013. This project widened Newport Road from two lanes to three lanes in each direction, from Antelope Road to Menifee Road. And under construction right now, we have the Newport Road Interchange, which will also add three lanes in each direction over the bridge, so. And this project's on schedule to be completed on winter of 2013, sorry, 2016. Upcoming project, we have the Newport Road Extension, Expansion, between Han to Bradley. Expected to begin in fall of 2016. And this project will also expand the road from two to three lanes in each direction. We'll build new sidewalks, new landscape medians, and new striping. We'll also add a traffic signal at Caya Thomas for future entrance to the town center drive, or town center project. And this is the project I want to bring to you tonight for your discussion, and this project will complete the Newport Road corridor from east to west, boundaries of the city. This project receives federal funds from the Moving Ahead for Progress in the 21st Century, or known as the MAP-21. That's what MAP stands for. So this grant authorizes federal funding for projects which include surface transportation programs. So the project is estimated to start construction on August of 2016. So this next slide will pretty much show you what the entire project from Han to Marietta will look like. We'll have a corridor in this area that will have three lanes going westbound, and for the most part, three lanes going eastbound.
The Marietta and Newport Road leg is at the top of the slide?
Yes.
And then it goes, it works its way eastward from there on the, on the pictures as you've laid them out?
Yes.
Okay.
Left to right, going down. I'll leave it there for a minute. So I'll go back to previous slide. So funding from this project, as I stated, 323,000 comes from federal grants, and 650,000 comes from Measure A, local funds. We are on schedule with this project, although because it's federalized, we have to go through Caltrans to get approval of some of the documents and some of the submittals that we, that we give to them in order to obtain the funds. And because of the tight timelines that they gave us, it's important that we, the staff recommends these following items. To adopt a resolution 16520, approving the participation in that 2015-16 federal MAP-21 Surface Transportation Program. Give authority to the city manager or his designee to sign and file associated documents, authorize the city manager to award bid for projects to the lowest responsible bidder, and to approve the contractor agreement to the lowest responsible bidder. And also authorize the city manager to approve the change of orders necessary for the unanticipated additional expenditures required. So, and this is because, as I said, is the time constraints of the grant. If we don't move at a steady pace, we lose, we risk losing the grant. So, yeah, let me go back to this slide. So, and this is, this is all I have for you tonight. So you got any questions?
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Just to reiterate what Mr. Geronimo was talking about, and what we're asking for tonight is not only approval of the MAP-21 grant funding, which would be used to pay for this portion of this project, and the portion is only the piece from Bradley to Marietta. That's the piece of the, of the project that we have funding for. Secondarily, we're under a timing crunch, and we need to get this out to bid, and we need to get the bid approved as quickly as possible, or we could possibly lose that funding source. So what we're asking for tonight is not only the approval of the use of the funds, so that we can get a resolution out to Caltrans, correct? So that they'll approve the funding, and then go through our normal bidding process, but allow me, the city manager, to sign the bid for the lowest bidder of the project, without going back to council. So we can get this out. without coming back to council, so we can get this out and, and actually, under construction, as quickly as possible.
Thank you. Mr. Denver?
What does MAP stand for again?
Sure.
Moving Ahead for Progress, 21st Century?
Yes.
Moving Ahead for Progress. Who came up with that?
It's a federal act, so...
Congress.
It's Congress, somewhere in Washington.
And Mr. Leesmeyer?
Uh, yeah, Carlos, thanks. Great presentation. Um, what's, what's your expected timeframe on this? Kind of, uh, construction schedule? When do you wanna start? When do you gotta finish? That sort of stuff?
This, uh, there's two projects here. So, there's the Newport Road Expansion from Hawn to Bradley. That one's expected to start somewhere in the, in fall, September of this year, and it's about a three-month project, so by the end of this year, that's, part should be done. And the resurfacing project from Bradley to Marietta, uh, we're expecting to start somewhere in August, late August, around that time. So, that'll probably start first and just continue on, uh, going east on the next project.
And would that be, uh, would that be night work, or day work, or what's, what are kinda shifts?
Oh, it's all day work during, uh, the times of 7:30 to 4:30, yeah. Because of the residential community on both sides of Newport Road, it's-
Okay. So, you'll be, you'll be doing a lot of lane reconfiguration to-
Yes.
-keep the traffic moving and draw that?
Right.
And then, um, there was a segment, um, i, if you're working from Marietta Road going east-
Right.
-the, there's a long-time development there of, of modular homes that's been there since way before incorporation.
Right.
And, and I noticed there's a segment of sidewalk missing along the front of that property, and, uh, I was curious, um, you know, a lot of those, those people feel like they're the redhead of Stepchild, and I was just curious about any sidewalk improvements that might be coming, uh, for that area as well, to kinda keep the, the walkability of the city moving.
Right. We do have, uh, a project in the works for that area to add the sidewalk and the ramps. Uh, we didn't add it to this project just because the grant was written specifically for the resurfacing of the road, and because it's a federal grant, we didn't wanna add too much to it because it was, it was pretty specific to it.
So, so after this is done, you have-
After this is done, we go back and, uh, do us another CIP project to add a sidewalk and ramps.
Excellent, excellent. They'll, they'll be happy to hear that. Thanks.
Mayor Protam August?
I'd la, I'd like to direct this question to the city manager. Great presentation, everything. But first, I've heard of MAP, uh, Mr. City Manager, and, uh, it's one of our speakers tonight, um, in public comments suggested we have, um, cons, cons, neighborhoods have concerns about roads and things like that, and that's not the first time we hear it, quite a bit. So, I'm curious, is this MAP program, is it just specific to Newport Road, or, um, you know, what they call the, um, roads that, uh, main roads that go through cities? And, or is it a program that we can rely on to help us get some of our neighborhoods cleaned up, uh, in the future?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Great question. Uh, it's for major arterial work, uh, number one, and two, um, it's specific to the area because it's a Caltrans interface, so I believe it has to be between an interchange or off of an interchange. Uh, it's not a residential side street, uh, type of work. But what this does do is free up several hundred thousand dollars in our PMP program, so that we can use that funding to do our resurfacing over arterial, or residential streets.
Are there any other streets or major arterials that you're planning on applying?
There are several, however, I believe this portion of funding was only available from, uh, for the 2014-15 fiscal year. Is that, I mean, Mr. Smith can, uh, can comment on that if, if he needs to, but I don't believe there's been another release of these funds, um, and they were gobbled up very quickly. Uh, we were very fortunate through RCTC to actually be given these funds.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Councilmember Sobek?
Thank you, thank you for your report. Um, you're, I, did I read something that they're gonna be using the rubberized road again? Um, do we know how that has done on the east side, and, um, can you share a little bit about that recycle and the quietness of it? Has it proven to do everything it's supposed to do?
Sure, I can, I can answer that. Um, yes, uh, the rubberized asphalt, one of the great qualities is that it keeps the noise down, um, and it has worked extremely well on, uh, Newport East, where we added another lane. Uh, it's, uh, it's very, it's very good material, um, and it's proven, proven well here, and so, it's also, it's gonna save us some money, remove some tires from landfills, all that good stuff, and plus, it's a great, it's a great product, and it will quiet down the roadway noise through that corridor.
Okay. That will be a plus. Thank you.
So, this was an in-house design, right?
Uh, yeah, portion from Bradley to Marietta, yes. That was an in-house design.
That was your work, right? You, you did it?
Yes.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation and your, your design. Um, I just want to bring focus to the interchange of, not interchange, the intersection of Marietta and Newport Road, where I know it may not be in the scope of this project right now, but at some point, we need to address that intersection, where you have 50 miles an hour coming from east going west towards Canyon Lake, and you get the intersection of Marietta, and you're forced to get down to 20 or 25 miles an hour, so that you don't bottom out your vehicle as you go through, um, the drainage areas, and then you go, when you get through the intersection, we're back up to 55. This particular project doesn't address that right now, does it?
No, it does not.
Okay.
And, uh, unfortunately, the infrastructure for proper drainage is non-existent in that area. We don't have a underground storm drain to convey the water from that particular intersection all the way to the wash or the Salt Creek. Um, so, and that, that is needed in order to get rid of that, uh, those two dits-
Okay. And, and the only one that goes faster through that intersection is Councilmember Leesmeyer and his truck-
Right.
-in the number one lane, he says, that you can get through there faster. On, on this particular slide, 1, 2, 3, 4, the fourth film strip down, where it has, I can't tell which intersection that is, is that Bradley and Newport, where it goes into, uh, just two lanes up here by, I guess it's just to the west of here? Before you head into Bradley, is that little section gonna be taken out? Are we, is that a right-of-way acquisition?
Show it.
That is, that's a right-of-way.
Yeah. What's the name of that building?
Lorry's entry.
Yeah.
That's where the future tire-
Right before it?
Right before it. On, yes, uh, that's a vacant lot, right? That's a vacant lot at the corner of Bradley and Newport. That's the one you're... Uh, yeah, we don't have the right-of-way yet. Uh, we tried to negotiate with the property owners to give the proper right-of-way to, to the, to do the full improvements, but unfortunately, they, they were not receptive.
Okay.
They wanted some other conditions that were not in line with the project.
Alright, thank you very much.
So, so one of the lanes goes away there?
No, not through there. There's still three, three lanes, but it's just a little tighter. It's not the full with improvements, that would like shoulders, uh, bike lanes, sidewalks, and all of that.
Thank you very much. Are there any more questions of council, from council? Hearing none, thank you-
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Uh, Mr. Leesmeyer?
I'm sorry, I do. Um, the-
One more.
Sorry, Carlos, maybe, maybe you can help me out with this.
Yeah.
Um, I get a lot of complaints from residents that live north of Newport in the Lazy Creek area, children walking across Newport Road to get to Evans Ranch at the Evans, at Newport and Evans. Um, recently, I saw that, that you guys were able to get out there and, and highlight those crosswalks again, so thank you very much, uh, for that effort. But going forward, is there anything else that we can do to that intersection to bring attention to that crosswalk, so that, you know, the kids are a lot safer there? Um, I've spoken with crossing guards. They, they, you know, th, they fear for their lives. People usually accelerate when they see a yellow light, and it's, it's dangerous all, all hours of the day with the kids crossing there. Any, any thoughts how we can make that thing better?
Um, I wasn't aware that was an issue, but-
Mr. Smith?
Yes, um, uh, I'm aware of the issue that you're, that you're speaking about and using, utilizing the services of our, uh, traffic engineer consultant. Uh, we're looking at ways that we can possibly do something there, but, uh, the MUC TD has, it's pretty restrictive on what we can add at intersections. But we are looking at, um, there, there are some new, uh, ideas for crosswalks and making them safer. However, it hasn't been adopted by the California MUTCD, um, so we're keep, we're keeping tabs on that. When, when that information's available, I'll bring it forward, and maybe that's something that we can do at that intersection.
What, for those non-engineers, what is an MUC TD? It sounds like it's a new, uh, nighttime cold medicine or something.
My, my apologies. That's the manu, that's a Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. It's a le, it's a legal guidance document that we utilize, uh, when we're, uh, designing intersections, and that's typically what the judges and lawyers use when they look at whether an intersection was designed properly or not. So, it's industry standard.
Are there, um, I seem to recall, but are, are there standards in the MUTC or whatever, um, for how far away from a school you can put a, a school zone flashing board sign?
Yes, it does cover, uh, those devices as well. Anything that goes in the roadway and-
So, could, could we be too far away from the school to do that, or is that something we could possibly do there?
I'll look at those options. That's one that I didn't consider, but I'll look at that.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you.
So, on this, can we, we have, uh, five recommendations from staff. Can we take them all in one motion, or do we have to do the resolution first, and then we can take the other four?
Mayor, you're able to move the full staff recommended action, the full five.
Thank you very much. Uh, hearing staff's report and having them answer questions, is there a motion on the DICE?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution 16-520, approving the participation in the 2015-16 Federal MAP 21 Surface Transportation Program.
I'll second.
And would you, uh, would you modify your motion to include the four other staff recommendations?
I could. And further authorize the city manager or his designee to sign and file the associated documents, um, authorize the city manager to award the bid for this project to the lowest responsible bidder, also approve the contractor agreement to the lowest responsible bidder, and then authorize the city manager to approve change orders as necessary for unaddition, uh, unanticipated additional expenditures not to exceed 10% of the contract amount.
Excellent, and that is, uh, seconded by Councilmember Sobek. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Leesmeyer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sobek?
Aye.
Councilmember Denver?
Aye.
Mayor Protam August?
Aye.
And Mayor Mann?
Aye.
That passes unanimously.
Thank you very much-
Thank you.
-for that project. Exciting stuff on Newport Road. Yeah. Alright, on to city attorney reports.
No report this evening, Mayor.
That brings us to city manager reports. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I do have an update on, uh, a recent polling that was conducted by Fairbank, Maslin, Mullen, Metz &amp; Associates regarding our public opinion research, uh, that was approved by this council for me to go into the public to ascertain some, some, uh, information, um, regarding some measures that may be coming up, and, uh, kinda taking a sense of, of the community. And, um, in our, in our conversation, uh, Bob Brady is working with me on, on the project with, uh, John Fairbank, we had some numbers that were, haven't been seen in other communities in a while, and it was pretty exciting. So, I'm gonna share some of that with you tonight, but on June 1st, FM3 is the group. They're gonna come back and do a full presentation, um, of the entire poll, and, um, and really give you an in-depth understanding of, of the information that, that we got from the, uh, from the survey itself. So, the survey found that a, um, of, a completed survey of 400 voters in the city of Menifee, that's the sample size. The survey found that, uh, one cent sales tax to fund vital city services is viable. It had a 55% voter likely to support it. Voters feel very positive about the direction their city is going in and perceive local government very favorably. In fact, they're overwhelmingly optimistic in Menifee. 81% say it's headed in the right direction. Also, 93% of those surveyed say they feel safe. 51% said they felt very safe. However, a majority believe crime from other communities is increasing, but not Menifee's. 62% give the city a good or excellent job rating. Three-quarters feel the city has better services than neighboring communities. Those that were polled see few serious problems in the community, but traffic ranks at the top. Fewer than one quarter see a great need for additional funding for the city, and few know about the vehicle license fee take-back. The 1% sales tax measure starts with a 55% support. Positive messaging brings it to a 62%. Public safety and roads, as we've heard tonight and seen, uh, from our commenters and, and the project, are top priorities for measured spending. Accountability provisions are also quite important. Um, traffic congestion and bridges, infrastructure rank very high. The strongest support messages stress accountability, local control, maintaining, uh, quality of life, that is currently here. So, whereas we have a, a phenomenal customer service survey on how we're doing as a city, uh, there's a lot of messaging out there that people don't understand, and when we started talking several weeks ago about, uh, our budget, where we're headed with our expenditures over our revenues, that's not out in, into the public. People don't understand that. So, um, that's something we need to do a better job about. However, currently, uh, over half the voters would vote yes on a proposed vital city services tax measure. So, support for the measure is above the threshold, threshold, and one-third of the voters say they would vote definitely yes. They did help us, right? The feedback helps us set funding priorities and provisions related to traffic, public safety, and accountability. They're most likely to say that requiring all funds remain local in Menifee is extremely important. Additionally, approximately 33% name repairing local interchanges and overpasses as an extremely important priority. 31% identify improving traffic circulation as extremely important, and other top funding priorities include maintaining 911 emergency response times, maintaining local fire protection, requiring independent annual financial audits, and maintaining local police protection. So, on, on June 1st, uh, when FM3 comes and John Fairbanks gives his report, you're going to hear about the entire poll, the questions that were asked, the percentages, the breakdown between the districts' responses, uh, you'll have a demographic response based on age, uh, you'll have a, a breakdown response based on voter type of party, and then by, um, by race as well. So, that's the update that I have for you tonight.
Thank you very much, sir.
On, on this piece, I've got one more item if, if there are no questions.
Question? Yeah, I do have a question. The, the, uh, the comment about crime from other cities, can you elaborate on that?
No, it's just, uh, currently, it just says, so I got a little snapshot, 'cause they obviously don't want me ruining their presentation-
Sure.
-next time. Uh, the comment was, 93% of people in Menifee say they feel safe, 51 very safe. However, a majority believe crime from other communities is increasing. So, you're gonna get a cross-section of what that means, how many people think that, what cities they believe they are, is that affecting Menifee? Would that affect our, uh, police force, and on and on? Okay.
Excellent. Look forward to seeing the-
Very interesting.
-full report on June 1st.
Yes. Uh, the, the other item I had, uh, before I give it over to, uh, our Community Services Director, is through a, um, through a listserv, uh, we see 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 3, 15, cities that responded to the listserv, um, throughout California, um, are looking at pursuing a sales tax increase. And so, we, we would, if we considered that opportunity, be in that ballpark. But the last item on the survey was that, uh, the UUT that was in the poll-
UUT?
-utility user tax, um, does, doesn't have a chance of passing at all. So, I think if we move, if we were to move forward, and based on your discussions coming into the future, that's probably not a viable option to talk about. Um, but Robert Lennox has some exciting news to tell you about our Community Services Department and a distinction that Menifee has just been bestowed on, upon, on, given? As one of very few number of cities in the state have gotten, no, in the nation. This is pretty exciting. There will be a press release, uh, we can release either right after or tomorrow.
Yes, shortly. Thank you, City Manager Johnson, Mayor Mann, and council. Uh, it is exciting information, exciting news. Uh, as of today, uh, it's official that the city of Menifee has been recognized and awarded as, uh, Playful City USA. Uh, that's quite a prestigious designation, uh, and when I say it's prestigious, uh, there are only- That's quite a prestigious designation, and when I say it's prestigious, there are only 251 cities in the country that currently have that designation. 31 cities were honored this year to make up that 251, 251 total, and none of those include cities that neighbor Menifee. So, this is, this is a big deal. So, a couple of months ago, staff round up, rounded up all of the work that's been done in the last year and a half or so, everything from new programs, activities, design standards, parks that have been opened, policies that had come before you, as well as the commissions, and packaged them all up to show and display how Menifee is making this city more playable for its residents. And the committee that reviews this agreed and bestowed that designation. And so, as a result, we will be amongst some of the top, many larger cities. As an example, Riverside is a designated playful city USA. And so, we now have the ability to apply for myriad of grant opportunities that not other cities will be able to, and we have a couple in mind, that we've seen some of the offerings as a result, and we'll be able to highlight some of those things. It also comes with some marketing components, freeway signs, that will invite people who are passing through to stop and recreate and see what we have to offer at, at some of our larger corridors and off-ramps in the city. So, we're very excited. We'll be meeting with the playful cities administration to find out a little more information about how we roll this out and how we take advantage of some of the resources that are now available to, to us. That completes it.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, yes.
Good job. Very well done, everybody. Exciting stuff. Does that conclude your, hopefully that does conclude the city manager report on that positive note.
Yes, sir. Just kudos to our public works and engineering staff and our community services department for their fine work in the last couple of months here to get not only these projects moving forward, but playful city USA.
Awesome. Very nice.
I believe there's a question about Memorial Day. There is a, the event is on the 30th, Monday, coming up shortly, and it, it is at Wheatfield Park at the Memorial Veterans Memorial at, just on the other side of the freeway, begins at 10:00 AM. So, please come and enjoy it. We have a pretty good program this year with a few new additions. We'll have a flyover, a wreath laying, and a few other things, so.
Mr. Denver?
The same day, at the Oasis, there's one at 8 o'clock, so we have a little competition there, but it's going to, maybe have our cake and eat it too.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Mr. Lennox. Does that conclude the city manager report for tonight?
Yes, sir.
Very well. We're on to council member agenda requests. Ms. Sobek?
Yes, the item that I mentioned earlier to go along with the Health and Wellness Fair, May is older Americans month, and so I was wondering if we might like to do a proclamation for that since we have that fair going on as well.
There's a, only takes a second. Only takes one. We have a second for Mr. August and Mr. Leesmeyer. Very good. We'll make that so. And thank you for bringing that up to our attention.
Thanks.
And Mr. Leesmeyer?
Yeah, I guess I, I would look to the city attorney for some guidance on this one. I'm, I'm interested in a, a policy for the council that, you know, a lot of people come up here and they, and they give us a hard time about, you know, what, what we might be spending money on and, and, you know, trips that we're taking and things like that. I'd be looking for some guidance to shed some light on a policy that might explain, you know, what we're doing. If, if maybe, maybe it's a, a threshold amount, maybe there's a, a number out there, any, let's say hypothetical, any amount over $750 that a council member might spend going to a conference or an event or something like that, there's a, some kind of a disclosure, just, just so that we're all transparent about what we're, what we're spending city money on and how that relates to the city. And conversely, if there's anything else, I mean, there's, got to be some other policy things that council members should be, should be open.
So, council policymaking is the purview of the council? So, if you had a second for that motion, we would certainly put together a package on that front if that is, is what you're, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I guess, do I have a second on that?
So, this is, this would be something outside of the normal budgetary setting process that we go through? We're getting ready to head, we have the budget workshop in June, and we'll head into adoption of our budget in June, which we do have council line item, in, in the council member, in the general fund under the city council's budget, there's travel and conference. So, you're looking for something outside of that?
Right. So, for instance...
Just to clarify.
Certainly, yeah. So, so if we're going to a conference, and it shows up on the warrant register that we, you know, that, that I spent $500 going to Sacramento for a league event, it might not necessarily say in that, in that report what exactly that was all about. Obviously, I'd bring back a report of, of what the event, what event took place, but to, to show the city that we are in fact in a position of, you know, a tight budget. You know, I think it's, I think for transparency's sake, we also need to be held accountable to the amount of money that we're spending on things, and if there's, you know, we, we bring back a discussion to figure out what that amount is, but we talk about that, that type of issue.
And, and there's a second for that, so we'll bring it back. Just for the sake of history, we do have, we're required to report our travel under AB 1235. So, I'm not so sure we need to actually formulate our own city policy for it, except to just do it. Secondarily, the previous council to the existing council, we actually, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Johnson, we actually had something in place with the council travel for, on the warrant register, as part of the warrant register, a separate report that Mr. Edgerton asked, developed, and we adopted that by, just from a, a dais discussion. It wasn't anything formalized. So, maybe we could just resurrect that instead of putting together a formalized policy as an option. We can't, we can't talk about it anymore tonight, but bring it back as an agenda item. We can wrap all that history up, what we've done before, why we're not doing it now, maybe what we're required to port under AB 1235, and not necessarily have a brand spanking new policy, but if there is one, maybe we can fold it into the decorum policy as an example. Mr. Denver?
You've said most of what I wanted to say, because I think there is a policy that's eight tenths of what you're proposing in pieces, but the other one is, is that if we're really going to do something that was on paper, we need to also explain the negative to, some of us don't go to things in the past because people criticize us for going and spending money, and the cost to the city for not going to things needs to be explained to the city as what we're losing. I know of grants we've lost, I, I know of a bunch of things we've lost because no one's been at the event, and you don't want to sit up here and say we, I spent $500 last week, and then you get nailed by three people from the audience. We ought to have something that explains the other side of it too. So, anyway, if we're going to do all that, throw that in there.
Thank you very much.
Is that a second?
Mr. Mayor Protam already seconded, so...
Okay.
And again, like we always do when we ask for staff to bring back stuff, just bring it consistent with the workload and the priorities that have already been set. Are there any additional, Ms. Sobek?
Yes, I have one more item. I noticed tonight we have a lot of students from Paloma Valley High School that I'm aware of tonight, and I thought, I had a question. I just thought it would be fun, since they're here, they're probably interested in what's going on in the town center when the movie theater will be open, and I was just wondering if anybody can give us an update on that. On the dais, staff.
Mr. Johnson, we talked about that in the Economic Development Ad-Hoc Committee meeting today, but there are some sensitivities on a couple things on the timing, so I would be reluctant to do that right now when staff's not prepared.
What about Central Park? Can we hear anything?
I apologize, I'm not really, I don't have an update in front of me. I can answer a few questions that you might have, if that's appropriate.
I just get a lot of questions, when is the movie theater coming?
So, we don't have a date.
Okay, and...
They are coming. They did buy the property.
So...
I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be rude.
I know, and I, and I apologize for not planning this ahead of time. I just thought of it tonight as I was sitting here, and I just know how eager a lot of people are for that.
We all are.
That center. I get questions all the time, so...
Bowling.
Yeah, so, sorry, we can't give you an answer.
If and when there's a submittal package, we can definitely tell you that they've submitted a submittal package.
Thank you.
Meantime, keep using Netflix and Uber. Mayor Protam August?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to ask, make sure that staff is, is clear on what Mr. Leesmeyer was asking. And Mr. Denver was saying, you know, we go to normal functions that were in the network of cities, state, local, regional, and things like that, and you're, you're assigned to go to some of them, all the council members are assigned to go to them. I don't think that's necessarily, I'm not sure if that's what meant, meant or not, but if something comes up out of the ordinary that is not in the normal routine of the city per year that, say, one of, the council members wants to attend, I think what Mr. Leesmeyer is saying, that, that they should bring that to the attention of the council and let the council decide that, and this would be on something that's not necessarily in the normal routine of, you know, the events that we go to in, in the network of the regions and the states and the counties and all that. I think, is that what you meant to say, Matt?
I think we have enough, do you have enough direction from, to bring back an item?
Could I, would it, would it be all right if I tried to put it back to you, sir, that I make sure I have it right? Okay? What I understood was that we wanted to explore the options that relate to, I'll call it broadly policies, I'm not, not necessarily talking about a formal policy, policies for, for reporting on council expenditures on events. Is that not, Rob says I've got it wrong already.
Can I try?
Go ahead.
I believe what you're attempting to do is formulate a policy that would identify the ongoing, regular, assumed league events and conferences that you're all aware of going with the agencies and organizations that we're connected to. And then anything outside of that, you're looking at a policy where a council member, should they want to go, would need to make that request of the council.
I think anything that, anything that's not adopted in our budget, in the council's budget specifically, should be brought back to the council.
I get it.
I would like to see that.
Can I just say that the first part of your comment was, is that the league and things that were, you said...
We will identify them.
Those things are things we're supposed to go to.
Correct.
And so, that's my part of it is underlined.
If we're a member of that organization, we should be attending and have representation.
Has clarity been achieved?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Are there any more requests from council members for future agenda items? Hearing none, we are adjourned.